This is the City of Wapaka, third Tuesday of the month, city council meeting.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's regular council meeting. The mayor is attending remotely, but he feels it's appropriate to have the meeting chaired by somebody in person, and that person is me. I'm Paul Mayo. I'm council president. I'd like to inform everybody that I will be voting on agenda items. We'll start the meeting out with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Barbara, would you read the open meeting statement, please?
This meeting and all meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
Thank you. Would you take roll call, please?
Colin Dykstra. Lori Chestnut.
Aye, here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Henry Velicker.
Here.
Scott Porczatski.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
Dimitri Martin.
Here.
Eric Olson.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Barb, I think, starting with you, would you introduce yourself in a little clockwise?
Barb Nowak, interim city clerk.
Aaron Jensen, city administrator.
Eric Bailey, library director.
Jared Raikew, community and economic development.
Stephanie Reif, finance director.
Justin Behrens, director of public works.
Laura Colbert, Parks and Rec director.
Brian Hosele, chief of police.
And Josh in the control room, Josh Werner, IT director. Okay, next we have the consent agenda. This is an agenda that contains a number of items that will approve with one vote. If anybody has an item on the consent agenda that they would like moved to the regular agenda, now's the time to request it. If not, I need a motion and a second to approve it.
Move to approve?
Second.
Moved by Martin, second by Chestnut, to approve tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carries. All right. No announcements or correspondence. We have public input next. If there's anybody in the audience, or a council member or staff, that has any public input on a non-agenda item, please state your name and address, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anybody? Henry.
Henry Velicker, 809 South Main Street. I don't know if anybody saw the governor's budget message on Wednesday. I must need to get a life. But I'm sure Mayor and Aaron and staff are, you know, watching this very closely. We read about it in the municipality magazine. They're, I think, very close to increasing shared revenue for the first time in over a decade. And there's some other neat prospects in the budget. Probably governor's budget's not going to survive as it is, for sure. But on the shared revenues, I guess this might be directed to Aaron. If there's anything you think we can do as elected officials to push that agenda forward, because it's important to us and our finances. And again, I don't know if you guys were aware of this, our representative Peterson is in the leadership of the assembly, and he was sitting right behind the governor, next to Robin Voss. So, he's our guy. So, I think we, he's there to represent us. Is there anything we can do to push an agenda that's helpful to us? Just let us know.
Yeah, absolutely. Paul, if you're all right, I'll comment on that. Thanks for bringing that up, Henry. Yeah, you're exactly right. And I think, if we remember, a couple months ago, we did pass a resolution that we sent on. The League of Municipality has some good resources and talking points. I'd be happy to share those with you as kind of a script. And I think that it would be very useful for any elected official to contact Kevin or Joan. So, thank you, Henry. Good idea.
Anybody else? Nope. Okay. Move on to the regular agenda. We do have one item that was distributed. Barb, would you describe that, please?
Under new business, number nine, item D, the solar and energy storage for the city hall. Justin Behrens had a handout with some additional information, which I put on all of your desks. That's the only addition.
Okay, thank you, Barb. Okay, I'll need a motion and a second to approve your regular agenda.
I'd make the motion to approve the regular agenda.
Second. Moved by Hagan, second by Velicker, to approve tonight's regular agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carries. Community and department head reports. First up, we have Matt Lonazak. Matt Lonazak? Did I say that right?
Yeah, that sounds good.
From the committee at the Fine Arts Festival. You're up.
Can you hear? So, I am coming here for the Wapaka Fine Arts Festival, just to kind of give you all a rundown on our activities that are going on. I am one of the chairman of the art show portion of it. We have the community choir, and then art show, and then the children's theater, and then the Wapaka Community Theater. So, to start out this year, we are starting out with the first thing. On Sunday, April 2nd, or April 2nd, we have at the Wapaka High School, at 2:30, the community choir presentation there. I'm going to butcher the name of it. I'll give you all a copy. And then, on April 22nd to the 26th, at the Wapaka Danes Hall, we have the art show. This is a collection of professional art, non-professional art, and high school. And then, through the summer, we have the children's theater, where they are doing Madagascar for the children's theater. And then, they are doing July 29th, 30th, August 3rd, 4th, 5th, and 6th, the Drowsy Chaperone, directed by... Those are our main events. What we really want to touch on also is... This is our 60th year of the Wapaka Fine Arts Festival. We were just recognized by the governor for our 60 years of constant, continuous kind of fine arts for the community of Wapaka. So, very honored by that.
Any questions for Matt?
Nice job.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Appreciate it. We'll move to department head reports, and we'll start with Eric.
Thank you. The report from the library starts on page 3 of your packet. Some items to highlight. We held Jack Rhodes Day at the start of February in honor of Jack Rhodes, who has passed away this past fall, and was a longtime presenter of movie programs at the library. Turnout was very good. Last movie we showed was Stagecoach, and included a few fond remarks from Jack Rhodes that he had pre-recorded. So, got some requests as far as whether it might be something we would consider returning to and hosting annually. We'll see. It is a program that we're going to be continuing on, on a month-to-month basis, showing the movies and sets as we had done in the past. Jack had, in addition to some other recordings, set us up with someone that he felt was our best candidate to continue the program. Also in pro... Also in programming, our Lunch and Learn program is going to be returning, now with partner and some sponsorship, since that is a rather time and resource-intensive program. So, very excited to see that returning in the spring. With the end of 2022, the annual report for the library has been submitted to DPI, Department of Public Instruction, with the state of Wisconsin. So, I look forward to being able, in, I think usually, in one of the April meetings is when the library presents that information to the city council. So, look forward to being able to share all of that information with you. We'll can also report a couple incidents of note at the library over the past couple weeks. Last week, one of our patrons had been experiencing some delays in getting her unemployment approved, to the extent that she was concerned about losing her house. She was very grateful for the little free pantry that the library now has available, as she was able to use some of the items from that to help her get by until she receives her first unemployment check. So, really highlights confirms for us that the pantry is visible and getting used, and is really fulfilling its role as a supplement to the food pantry for our patrons who are having some difficulties. Can also report that last week, we had our first request for English language classes. Paula Cardenas has been using the library's study rooms for several weeks, and uses a translator app on our phone. Her companion Felipe Montoya asked about classes to learn to speak English. Our head of adult services, Patsy Servie, was able to get the library's ESL language learning laptop, which is a pretty old setup, so I'm thinking we're going to have to get a new machine here. Dates back to 2009, so I'm partly impressed that it and all of its software still works. And it has Rosetta Stone English language lessons built onto it. They, Paul and Felipe, were very excited to hear that we're planning some group conversation programs where English and Spanish-speaking participants can practice their language learning skills. I know that's something that has been discussed as a conversation, as a community initiative, and I think, like Patsy and Molly at the library, might have actually taken some initiative and run with that idea to see if they can set something up in-house for the library as well. I am, can also report that the Wapaka Area Public Library, our goal is always to do the most we can with the, we have the funds available to that end. Frequent evaluations of our workflows and services are really important. So, adult services staff members have been meeting together regularly over the last couple months, working together as a team to review our services. And this is not always the most comfortable process, but it's important. It's important to making sure that we're doing the most that we can with the resources we have available. It's already starting to show some really positive results, letting us do more and work more efficiently. And finally, I can report that my six-month probation period is over, and that the library board has opted to keep me on. So, very excited, happy to be here hopefully for quite a while yet. Thank you to everybody that has welcomed me as part of the team here in Wapaka. I've only been here six months, but it actually feels like I've been here longer, and that's really a testament to the wonderful reception and the great folks that I have the opportunity to partner with here in Wapaka. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Any questions for Eric? Okay, we'll move to Jared Raikew.
Thank you very much. My report starts on page 18 of your packets. Report on the SmartGov permitting software. We are continuing to use the new online permitting software. It appears to be going fairly smoothly. We have received a fair amount of positive comments from the system, just the flexibility it offers to fill out the applications, the ease it is to pay online, all under the same permits. And staff has begun to really try to utilize its full capabilities and try to really go paperless. So, it's been a great opportunity, I think, so far, and we hope to continue to get people using it, comfortable with it, and hope to receive more positive comments. So, that's exciting. We are continuing the downtown partnership group meetings. We hope to kind of start to really formalize this group. First step of that, we did set formal meetings. So, if any of the council members are interested in attending those, the meetings here are in my report. They're bi-monthly, so if anybody would like to attend, they're more than welcome. But we hope these regular scheduled or pre-scheduled meetings that were sent out to the larger group kind of attract more business owners to the meetings, so we can have more input. So, hopefully, that continues to ramp up, and we get more interest from business owners, in which hopefully, they take the lead with the meetings and the content. We continue on our Economic Diversity and Resilience Strategy report with our consultant, Place Dynamics. We just held a steering committee a little while back, and now we hope to start up some focus groups to talk about incubator space. That is a section of this study, so that's exciting for that to continue. We continue code revisions. There's actually a code revision for the Resource Conservation and Parks District to come forward to plan commission in March. But we hope to continue the discussions on the rest as well. General development updates. There is a 30-unit apartment complex proposal for 223 Division Street, coming forward to plan commission in March. There's also a 100-unit complex at 609 Tower Road, which is by, over by Foundry Plant 2. So, both of those projects coming forward in March. Super excited to, you know, see what the plan commission has to say about those, and hopefully, we can get those approved and in process. That is it, unless there's any questions.
Okay, thanks, Jared. Stephanie Reif, you're up.
Thank you. Kind of just continuing on from last month, we're still working on getting some paperwork for the audit as we prepare for that. That's coming up in March. And a collaborative that we're doing with the, as the Finance Department with the Park and Recs Department, we're trying to streamline the seasonal hire process, so that it's a little bit easier and that we have a better idea and a better handle on how we're going to handle all of the seasonal employees this year. Just working on getting our SmartGos up to date and creating work instructions as we continue on learning things in our department. Short and sweet, to the point.
Well done. Just wait. Any questions for Stephanie? Okay, Justin, you're up.
Thank you, chairperson, mayor. My memo starts on page 21 of the packet and the 22. The wastewater side, we submitted our mercury-plutin minimization report for 22, and we're happy to report our lowest mercury concentrations ever. And that's a continuation of a downward trend for the last number of years. So, it's something that we've been working on, I guess, a long time, and with coordination with the DNR, we monitor the incoming and outgoing concentrations of mercury. So, it is basically a testament, not only to our staff, but also the community for reducing this hazardous material. The new truck arrived at the treatment plant. We did some looking into the new hoist, like I talked about last time. We found an option that was well under what we expected, and it's very similar to what we have on the truck now, or, excuse me, on our old truck, and very similar to the old type of hoist we have on our truck. So, with it being at the cost that it is, we were just going to go ahead and purchase this without additional council approval. We started accepting some cheese whey from Agarpur, which is nearby. It's a high-strength waste. It does kind of bring in a little extra revenue. Excuse me. And since we're a little deficient on BOD at our plant, it does help, I guess, support our phosphorus accumulating organisms. So, it's something that we are accepting at a limited basis, and we're analyzing and keeping track of how our plant is performing at the same time. Street department, we are removing, or have removed, a number of dead trees in the right of way. So, that would be in the roadway and also in parks. So, if you see a number of trees coming down or have been removed, it's us doing what we've, what we typically do every winter, removing dead or nuisance trees. A number of those are still ash trees, which we still have, but we're getting very close to having either removed or treated in our community. Speaking of taking things down, we removed the old stadium lights at Habercorn. So, that was an interesting thing that the street crew actually got a lot of enjoyment out of. And they took them down very similar to trees. We kind of dug a hole on one side and pushed them, and they actually came down very slow. They did not smash the ground, so. Interesting. Waterside, we did some quarterly sampling for IOC's, VOC's, and SOC's, and I mention that because that is not an every-year thing, but when we do do it, it's a suite of analysis of over 200 different chemicals. So, it's a pretty robust testing that we do for our system. We are still monitoring the water temperatures, and there are a number of customers that are on a list that are routinely get slowed down by frozen pipes. And even though during the day, this is the time of year, sometimes it can get 35, 40 degrees, sometimes even nicer, the ground is still very well frozen. So, just because it gets nice outside doesn't mean that the ground is thawed out. So, all these customers, we just like to remind them, if you are on a trickle order or in awareness for frozen pipes, to keep minding those pipes and listen to the water operators as they reach out to you. Facilities, Jake is feeling in, or feeling, fitting in very nicely. We are starting to work on our annual safety meeting and programming, also working with Park and Rec to set up first aid and CPR. So, that is an every-other-year renewal for all employees. And then also, the first timers have a little bit longer of a training day. And then, speaking of trees, we are working on next year's trees. So, we're coordinating again with parks, obviously, for Swan Park and a couple others in the streets as well. And then, wastewater department's jumping on. We're going to plant a few trees around some lift stations for screening. Outside of that, the new facility, working on getting a public meeting and a ribbon cutting setting up. I don't, I do not have details on that yet, but very shortly, we should be expecting those sort of things to start this spring, April, and May. Nate Smith's at eight years as our crew leader, a great guy. And I know you appreciate the shout-outs, so I'm going to bump that one a little bit extra. And then, from last meetings, the three promotions are fully in effect with Jake Waller being our facility superintendent, John Bartle as our lead mechanic, and Tegan Noltnor as our mechanic.
Thanks, Justin. Any questions for Justin?
I have one question. What do you do with the wood? When you take the trees down and you cut them all off? What do you do with wood?
We have a stockpile, and they're basically left up at the recycling center. When the pile gets big enough, we get a company to come in and basically chip it down for us. They leave some at the recycling center that we can resell, but they take most of it, and they reuse it or sell it off to, like, energy companies to burn. So, basically, we have to wait for the pile to get big enough, so it's like a zero cost to us. So, they have enough product there to make money off of, but then they don't charge us. And then, we get a little bit on the side.
I was curious.
Yeah.
Thanks, Justin. Laura Colbert.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to start with, we had a few incidences in January at the rec center, and I just wanted you, as council members, to be aware. So, if anybody's asking why there was a number of ambulances there, you can answer the question. They are all unrelated and very, just accidental, if you will. And, you know, we've done after-action reviews to see if there's anything we can do to prohibit this, but it really probably is very much correlated with the higher number of patrons we have coming through our doors, especially right now in the winter months, when people come inside instead of spend time outdoors. Lakeman Field, thank you again for preapproving our... John Kinnear at Retler Corporation has moved forward with a master plan, and hopefully, we can start fundraising, starting in March, is our hope. And Medallion Hunt, after four clues, our medallion has been found. It was at Shambow Park, so we hid it the day after our Shambow Park hike in a little crevice, and it took people a lot longer this time to find it, but they, they did before the sixth clue came out. It was actually the same family that found it the very first time. So, I, now you know there's diehards out there, so if you're interested in finding it, you better, you better get out and really look. Our new spring and summer program guide is complete and at the printers right now, and we're hoping to have that distributed by March 1st. Please be kind if there's errors. This is our first go-around. We had Tamra there to help weed through a lot of things, and so hopefully, it will be good and robust, just like always. We do have four new classes, which is our Wapaka Area All-Stars for our inclusive and adaptive rec program. We've got water skiing, introductory chorus, which is in collaboration with chain skiers. We also have a remote-control airplane class in collaboration with EAA, and that will be held out at the airport. And a log-rolling class. Yes, so, we have somebody who moved up from Madison, who owns his own log-roll, logging rolls, rolls, log, log-rolling logs. And it's really fun. I've tried it myself. I actually taught log-rolling when I was a teacher in Madison. So, anyways, I'm excited to sign my kids up for that one. Winter rec fest happened on February 11th, and it was, without snow, a huge success. We still had some people who found the small little patches on the sledding hill go down the sledding hill. And the Arctic Dash happened. Even the dog sledding dogs came out. And even though they didn't go dog sledding, you could see them and learn about dog sledding. And the big, amazing part was our chili cook-off, where we had 11 restaurants come and donate chili, and they were spectacular. And so, we're hoping to do it again next year. It was a huge hit. Everybody that came in the tent raved about how good the chili was, and it was packed for a good two hours. We had broom ball and just illuminated storybook walk. I want to give a huge shout-out to the library. They had volunteers there the whole time. We could not have done it without them, as well as adventure outfitters. And if you haven't heard of Phoenix Mobility Rising or Wapaka County Catch-a-Ride, they were there helping the whole time, too, so we're really indebted to them and their volunteers. And then, Piggly Wiggly donated the water, so it was just great. Our Parks guys, Josh and Casey, are busy with wearing many different hats this winter, helping with snow removal, and also, anything that needs to happen within our buildings and within their buildings, and maintenance on all their equipment and stuff. And our next big thing is our program guides come out March 1st.
Thanks, Laura. Any questions for... All right, we'll move to Chief Hosele.
Thank you. If you notice, we did not have anything in the packet this month. We did not have a police commission meeting. We'll be having one in March, but there have been a few things that have happened with the police department. I don't know if, some of you haven't noticed, but we have some cameras that are up on the exterior of town. They're called flock cameras. They're license plate readers. And what those do is they'll capture details on vehicles besides license plates, the make, the model, whether it has a roof rack, whatever it may be. Any vehicle that goes by there, we can search for that vehicle. So, one of the statistics that's really ironic is seven out of 10 crimes are committed with a vehicle. So, this allows us, any vehicle that's entering and... So this allows us any vehicle that's entering into the city for us to look for that vehicle. Somebody gives a description to us, uh, what that vehicle is, we can put that information in and look for it. Obviously it's best with the license plate, but what it also does is if there's any Amber alerts or any vehicles that are wanted and that license plates enters into the city of Opaquah, within 15 or 20 seconds, that'll send an alert to the squads and they'll know where that vehicle is where it entered the city of Opaquah. Um, so, uh, you'll see a lot of news media in this, in regards to this coming up because the Fox Valley has a bunch of cameras, Milwaukee has a bunch of cameras, um, New London's getting some, Clintonville's getting some. So any vehicle that goes by there that we're looking for, we'll be able to track. So for investigative purposes, it's gonna be really cool to have something like that at our, at our fingertips. Um, the other thing that we're doing is we're just finishing up on working on the annual report. So I'm hoping to have that to the commission at our March meeting and then hopefully in April it can be presented to council. And the last thing, um, today we met with the school district with all the different, um, administrators that are involved on a school safety plan. So they had a tabletop exercise in regards to how we're gonna react if something happens at the school. So myself and, uh, the sheriff's department and like probably about 50, 60 other people from the schools all met together today just to talk about safety plans and what we're gonna do. So that's all that I have.
Thanks, chief. Any questions for the chief?
Paul, how long do we have those cameras for?
We're working out a, a contract with them, but I'm hoping up to five years. So, and then, uh, the plan is right now, well, we had three up, but we're down to two because one got hit in an accident. So they're coming to, they're coming to fix that. So it was up an hour and 10 minutes before it got hit.
Did you get the license plate?
Yeah, we got the license plate. The vehicle's on top of it, so. It just happened to be that when the roads really turned bad the other day, the, everything turned to ice and there was a collision and it landed on top of the camera and I didn't realize it until I was driving off that we actually had a, that the camera's actually up, so. But they are up and operating and within the last 24 hours with the two cameras that we've had, um, we've taken 4,403 photos of vehicles coming into the city of Opaquah. So, yeah. And then we can also search, like if we're looking, all the cameras, Green Bay, Milwaukee, we have access to all those systems. So we can use those resources too.
Excellent.
Yes.
Thanks, chief. Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Josh Werner.
Um, okay. On the Opaquac online side of things, we submitted our grant application, uh, for the grant you approved at the last meeting. We have a grant we're working through this year. We just ordered the equipment and the licensing for that and that's to back, upgrade, uh, four of our back halls. Um, IT side of things, I've been periodically working through some reviews of our security of our different systems and focused on our Microsoft 365 email last week and, uh, made some upgrades and some new best practices on some security for that emails. One of the key ways viruses and malware and all that sort of stuff happen. Um, gonna be starting shortly on our annual computer replacement and updates. Been working with our electronics recycling vendor on getting this year's event scheduled and getting materials together to start promoting it. It's taking place Friday, April 21st. And then on the community media side of things, we've added another distribution channel for our content. We've, uh, set up a podcasting service to put some of our content out to reach other people in other ways. Called the Chain Domain Podcast and it's found on all the main podcast platforms. So if that's something you're into, look that up on your phone or tablet and you can get some of our content that way as well.
Thanks, Josh. Questions for Josh? Okay.
Nice. Barb. Thank you. Um, I don't have too much. Uh, it's been, um, pretty much election, everything, even though it's a small election, we still have to go through all the same things. We went to the nursing homes and we had 39 voters there. Um, the chiefs and some of the poll workers went, um, last week and we had in-office voting the last two weeks and we had about 40 people come in the office and vote. Uh, we sent out or the nursing homes a total of 266 ballots and we have 221 back. So hopefully some more will come in the mail tomorrow or be dropped off at the polling place. They can drop them off till eight o'clock. Um, and Jake Waller and Josh, um, helped set up today, um, at the rec center. They brought over the, um, or set up the tables and then Josh helped set up the Badger books, so they're all ready to go. Um, and as far as the reports, I, um, got the lottery credit for the mobile home report filed with the DOR. That was, um, a deadline of December 20, or February 28th, I think. Um, and then in the packet was also the licenses that have been issued for the month of January. That's all I have.
Barb, any questions for Barb? Aaron.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, council members, you can see my packet on page 28 of your packet. Go through a couple of things. Uh, the leadership series, I just wanna touch on that. We had our second session last Wednesday and I'm happy to report that our number went from 18 staff members to 30. I'm really, really excited about that. Um, our staff has just shown a ton of initiative and, and engagement while in the sessions. It's been great. Our speakers so far have been very good and our next month's speaker will be Jen Herb from the high school. She's the assistant principal and she's gonna talk about kinda like the power of positivity. Um, and if you know Jen, she'll be a perfect candidate for that topic. Next, uh, Opaquah farm market changes. Uh, you've probably seen in a couple of my newsletters and recent reports that the farm market, um, recently has kinda been detached from living in Opaquah Way. Living in Opaquah Way voted to no longer kinda be a partner with that. That really caused us to question, what is that farm market gonna look like if it looks like anything in 2023? Uh, give the committee a ton of credit in a very, very short amount of time. They have been able to create bylaws, establish EIN numbers, uh, get bank accounts set up and they are moving towards, uh, a nonprofit, uh, board. Um, and the recruitment has been happening for that nonprofit board. I, just in some emails, it looks like we have about five of the seven men, members that have committed. Um, so we'll continue to work on that and I think in the end, that's probably the best long-term scenario is to have that, uh, that standalone farm market board. The city is represented on it and Leslie Byersdorf, our recreation coordinator, has agreed to, to be that rep. That'll be a great fit with her wellness background. Jared touched on a couple of things on my report, so I won't rehash that. Uh, my evaluation or the city administrator's evaluation is happening, um, at, after the next council meeting. We're gonna do it in a closed committee of the whole session, so council members, uh, just be prepared to stay a little longer. You'll have an opportunity to speak with me in the room and without me in the room. Um, I will give kind of a recap of, and I'll provide material on what my 2022 goals were. Did I, did we accomplish them? Did we not? Why did we? Why didn't we? Also, um, I'll give you a summary of what I'm thinking for 2023. You guys can kinda dissect that and see if we're on the same page. So I look forward to that and your feedback. If you have questions leading up to it, uh, just let me know that anytime or after, whatever. Um, and then I'll just go through a couple of things that usually at the end of my report, I have a, a couple of meetings, uh, throughout the last several weeks. Um, strategic plan meetings with department heads. We've been able to meet with most all of department heads over the last couple of weeks to update where we are on our action plans and initiatives. Um, I'm gonna tie this into the comment that Henry made earlier in public input. He mentioned that the shared revenue, there is a proposal from the governor to have a impactful change in a positive direction from a shared revenue. We don't know where that's gonna shake out yet, but right now it, it looks like it could be a positive thing. Originally my plan was to, to kinda redo or update the strategic plan in 2024. Uh, however, with this potential, um, in the next budget season, Mayor Smith and I talked and we think that it'd be worthwhile to potentially do an update this summer, uh, so we're all on the same page. Uh, moving into a budget season, that may look a, a little different than typical. So we'll be in touch with that. We were thinking in the summertime, um, so we'll, we'll be in touch. Municipal class presentations from the Chan Exploration Center, was able to attend a couple of those and city council's gonna get an opportunity to see a few seventh and eighth graders come in next, uh, next council meeting and they're gonna present some, some kinda neat subjects on, uh, there, it was municipal, it was Opaquah being, um, a potential climate change migration destination. And there was a lot of, um, neat municipal tie-ins and I think you guys will enjoy it. Kids did a great job. It'll be a great opportunity to connect us with the students here in Opaquah. And, uh, I just wanna touch base and give a lot of credit to, uh, Laura, Eric, other library staff, uh, the police department. Paul Benchwell's gonna be sitting in with us as well. Um, we've had a lot of conversations. We're kinda coining it that our diversity committee, um, our demographics are changing over the last year plus. Um, we have more non-English speakers and we're trying to figure out how do we meet the needs of all of the people we serve, um, whether that means providing, uh, written communication, um, face-to-face communication, uh, and we are meeting with the school district, uh, Fox Valley Tech and, uh, just trying to figure out how we can all collaborate to do that as effectively as we can and as efficiently as we can. It's a work in progress. Um, we're learning from each other as we do it, uh, but it's been a good conversation and we'll continue to do it for a long time, I'm sure. So if there's any questions on that, I'd be happy to, uh, give you more detail. But that's all I have, Paul, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thanks, Aaron. Any questions for Aaron? Okay. We'll move on to unfinished business. Uh, just wanna end up tonight, ordinance number, the second reading of ordinance number 01-2023. Jared, would you remind us what this is all about?
Of course. Uh, so this item starts on page 51 of your packets. Uh, this is a zoning change. Uh, so what essentially happened is, uh, this parcel has expanded. Um, we had to prove the certified survey map for it. Uh, this expansion, uh, with it expanding, uh, then reached into another zoning district. So now it was dual zoned. So we're just coming back to clean that up to make sure the new expanded parcel is zoned one zoning district, which is B4.
All right. Um, I would need a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 01-2023. Move to approve.
Second.
Move by Olson, Second Bay Peterson, that we approve ordinance number 01-2023 and earnestmending 17, uh, point 102 zoning district map as allowed under 17.70, uh, for 701 South Industrial Drive. Any discussion? Barb, would you just take the role, please?
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Henry Bellicker?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Scott Burchatsky?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Laurie Chestnut?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
All right. Item nine is new business. Uh, first item is resolution number 153, uh, 1534, resolution providing for the sale of approximately $3,730,000 note anticipation note. Aaron.
Thank you, Paul. Um, and council members, this starts on page 57 of your pack. As you can see, we have esteemed Justin Fisher from RDW Barrett here, uh, to help us through this. Uh, this is something that, just to recap and set this up, we're gonna, he's gonna be talking about all three resolutions. We have them separated. There'll all be separate actions, uh, but he'll talk about all three of them right now in this little presentation. Uh, the first one is for the note anticipation note, as Paul said, for the public works facility and for the 2023 and 2024 water revenue bonds. The second one, 1535, is for GO bonds. Um, and this is, if you remember, uh, when we went through the budget process, we're really targeting that 1.5 million or less, uh, to execute our plan, um, with the public works facility, uh, and keep costs under control. Uh, so you'll see that that's for about 1.3 million and that's for 2023 projects. And then resolution 1536 is for the sewer revenue bonds and that is also for 2023 and 2024, a two-year project borrow for about 1.1 million. Important to note that this is all remains unchanged from our budget process. Uh, this is the capital plan we talked about in the fall and I will stop babbling and hand it over to Justin and he'll go through his presentation.
Thanks, Aaron. Great to see everyone. It's that time of the year where, you know, you see me come and, and talk about the, uh, the year's capital improvement borrowing plan. So, you know, working with Aaron and Stephanie and, and others, uh, we look at the five-year capital improvement plan and ultimately model in how this is, how the big puzzle's gonna, uh, be put together. And so tonight, what we're gonna be going through is the three issues that, that Aaron talked about. I'll talk about the summary of those issues. We'll talk about the timeline and then I'll go through the detailed financing illustrations, uh, fairly briefly and then finish off with some, some general obligation borrowing capacity, uh, you know, things that we're looking at long-term. So in that presentation back at the first page, you can see the summary of financing. So, you know, $1,305,000 for the general obligation promissory notes, as, as Aaron said, for the 23 projects. This is gonna be a 10-year financing, so very consistent with what the, the city has done in the past. With payments, March 1 of 2024 to 2033, first interest in 2024, uh, being March 1. Callable March 1 of 2030 or any date thereafter. So again, that's the day we can refinance, prepay, um, et cetera. The estimated interest rate is a 4.25%. The note anticipation notes, that's gonna be at the amount of $3,730,000. Uh, it's gonna fund the remaining, uh, public works plus the 23, 24 CIP. It is gonna have capitalized interest in there, um, through, uh, September 1 of 2024 to make the interest payments, uh, as we continue to watch how the, um, debt is, is, is gonna be paid off over the next year and a half, plus how the valuation of the community is, is gonna come out, you know, come end of, end of each year. That's really gonna tell us a lot. So this is gonna be our first interest payment, March 1 of 2024 and callable March 1 of 2025 or any date thereafter. And again, estimated interest rate 4.25%. The final is a sewer revenue bond, uh, in the amount of $1,110,000, fund the 23, 24 projects, 10-year financing, May 1, 2025 to 2033. First interest, November 1 of 2023. Callable May 1 of 2030 and a slightly higher interest rate of 4.75% because it is a, it is not an unlimited tax levy type, uh, borrowing. It is strictly paid from the sewer utility revenues. So we just need to be able to point to that. So the tentative timeline here, talk about it tonight, uh, get the resolutions approved and we're kinda, we're, we've been working on this for the last several months now. Um, but really the, the offering documents, so that's what's gonna be sent out to the, the market. We're gonna go through the bond rating process here in a couple of weeks, uh, where myself, Aaron, Stephanie will be on a call with Standard and Poor's and go through the financials of the community, talk about what's been going on, what you see, you know, what we see coming down the pipeline, et cetera, and answer a bunch of their questions and say why, you know, as, as we've talked about, why city of Opaquah is the greatest city in the world. So that's gonna be our, kinda our conversation we're gonna have with them in a couple of weeks, uh, to ultimately, uh, get our bond rating affirmed, uh, ideally at the A-plus rating, which is what the, what the city currently has, which is a very good bond rating. Then come March 21st, that's when we would lock in the interest rates and then close on the financings, April 11th of 2023. So going to page two, there's a lot of numbers on this page, but I'll walk you through from the left side of the page to the right side of the page, something you've, you've seen from, that I've, uh, presented in the past, but the left side of the page, that's the levy supported debt service on an annual basis. So that's what your debt payments are outstanding right now. The middle of the page, that's what we're talking about today. Then you can see what the combined debt service may look like, uh, after the financing. We took it a step further to say, if we model out a million and a half dollar financing's going on, uh, forever, what does that debt service look like? We also modeled in, uh, the remaining portion of the public works project, which is about the $3 million. So modeled that in, uh, in addition to, to everything. And then the far right side of the page is what the total combined debt service on a levy supported basis may look like, uh, with everything and all the assumptions baked in. So that's kinda the, the general, uh, obligation capital improvement plan. If we go to the next page, that's the water system financing illustration. So the left side of the page again, that's the existing water revenue bond debt service on an annual basis. And you can see that it has a nice drop in the debt service come 2025. And that's what we're kinda, we're work, we're paying off debt and we're getting paying off debt and we're getting projects done and so forth. And so it's kind of works hand in hand. And that's why the city has been doing borrowings every other year for the revenue, water and sewer utilities. So the middle of the page, that's what we were talking about today for the anticipation notes. And then we modeled in, you know, based on the five-year CIP, there's about a million, 1.8 million dollars for the 25 and 26 combined capital projects, and then about a million dollars for 27, 28. So we modeled that in to the future hypothetical debt service. And then the far right side of the page, that's the combined debt service. Now, with utilities, one thing that we're really watching is what is the revenues of the water utility versus the operations and maintenance expenses on an annual basis? And what is the potential debt service going to look like, you know, factoring everything in? The ideal situation is that you're, you're at a coverage ratio, meaning that your revenues to your expenditures is at least 1.25 times coverage. You can see in here, it's around that, that point in the blue, but I wanted to highlight because that's something we're paying very close attention to because you, you're at 1.1 times coverage potentially come 2028. Now, there's a lot of assumptions in here and, you know, this will constantly change, but it is something that we're very cognizant about because we don't want to, you know, issue this debt and you not have the revenue structure in place to be able to pay the debt service. 1.1 times is kind of the bare minimum that you, you, the market would accept. Ideally, you get closer to that 1.25% or times coverage. And so that's what we're looking at, you know, between now and, and next 2025 borrowing to see where revenues are coming in, to see if we can take on the debt at that particular time or not. So going to page four here, I think this, this illustration is kind of an exciting illustration for the city to see because I've been here where I presented and, you know, looking at the general obligation debt capacity of the city, it has been very close to your policy. So municipalities are allowed to borrow up to 5% of your equalized valuation. That's kind of the state statute. The city has a policy in place to say, we're not going to exceed 3.75% of the total 5%. Kind of giving yourself, you know, a conservative approach to say, we don't want to get even close to that, that max amount we can borrow. So in, in reality, 5% of your equalized valuation tied in is $536 million. That, your legal authority is about $27 million. Per the policy, we're keeping it to not exceed $20 million. So that's what I'm, I modeled in here is, is not to exceed the $20 million. The black bars, that's your existing debt payments, or that's your existing debt that's being paid off on an annual basis. You can see that each year that goes by, those black bars decrease. The green in there, that's the hypothetical future borrowings of 1.5 million dollars every year going forward for life. Then the blue, that's the $3 million public works project built in. So based on kind of what we're seeing, you know, come that 2025 timeframe, we probably are going to be in a good position to be able to take out the portion of the, the note anticipation note that, and fund the, the remaining portion of the, the public works facility and still have a nice cushion in there before you hit that policy. Because the other things I'm thinking about, and Aaron and Stephanie, are, you know, the tax increment district, is there going to be infrastructure that needs to be put into place for that to see some development grow there? So those are all things that we're, we're thinking about and we don't want to go right up to the capacity right now and, and fund this public works project. Let's pay off a little bit debt, try to keep that, that cap, annual capital borrowing to 1.5 million dollars or less, as Aaron said, and then get to a point where we feel comfortable. This may change. This, you know, this is using a one and a half percent growth factor to the valuation, but if we see another really large growth year, that could change this graph quite a bit. Last year, the, the city grew 13% from 21 to 22 on an equalized valuation basis. That, that changed things quite a bit. We're going to continue to look at that every fall when the number is released to say, you know, now are we in a better position to be able to, to fund the remaining portion? Or do we need to leave it out there for a little bit longer until we feel comfortable? That, that's what we're, we're all kind of looking at on an annual basis. Now going to the last page of the presentation, this is just the sewer revenue bond financing illustration. So again, left side, that's your existing debt service. Middle page, middle part of the page, that's the financing we're talking about tonight. And then the combined debt service on the right. You can see that the sewer utility is, is in good shape. We feel very good about the sewer utility and the coverage ratio that we're seeing for, for that, to be able to pay the debt service. With that, yeah, I mean, we, we've got some, some items we got to get done over the next several weeks, but I will be back here then, and, you know, around that March 20th timeframe to tell you the news of the bond financings.
Thanks, Justin.
Yeah.
Any questions for Justin at all? Scott?
With the, our economic situation in our country, they're talking about interest rates rising. Does that have an effect on how we're borrowing and our interest rate? Is, is, or is that two separate kind of worlds?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's somewhat tied, right? I mean, inflation definitely is having an effect on the municipal bond world.
Okay.
But when you think about the Fed and you hear them raising rates, that's really affecting in our world, kind of that, you know, six-month in type, you know, those short, short time financings. But again, at the same point, it's kind of a unique situation because you can now take that money if you borrowed and invest it in almost the same interest rate, whereas before you couldn't do that. It's kind of an interesting where, you know, not to get too technical, but there's almost an arbitrage type, type situation right now, which we haven't seen in a very long time.
Thank you.
Paul?
Where are you going to be shopping our bonds?
So they are sent out in the public market, meaning that anyone from local banks can purchase to, you think of insurance companies, trust funds, anyone that is in the market for buying municipal bonds. So it's shopped out to them that ultimately they are the ones deciding if they want to submit a bid on it or not. And it's a supply-demand thing.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Justin was talking about all three resolutions. We'll take them one at a time. The first is resolution number 1534 for the $3,730,000. Need a motion to approve in a second.
So move.
Second. Moved by Chestnut, second by Martin, that we approve resolution number 1534 for $3,730,000. Any further discussion? Barb, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Laurie Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you, Barb. Next is resolution number 1535, resolution providing for the sale of approximately $1,305,000 in general obligation promissory notes. Need a motion in a second, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Hagan, second by Olson, that we approve resolution number 1535, $1,305,000. Any further discussion? Barb, would you take a roll call vote?
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Laurie Chestnut?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Thank you, Barb. And the third item is resolution number 1536, a resolution providing for the sale of approximately $1,110,000 in sewage system revenue bonds.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Peterson, second by Velicker?
Laura got me.
Laura?
Didn't you do it?
Nope.
No, it was Scott.
Oh, it was Scott.
By Porczatsky. Moved by Peterson, second by Porczatsky to approve resolution number 1536 for $1,110,000. Any further discussion? Barb, would you take a roll call vote, please?
All right. Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Henry Velicker?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Colin Dykstra?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Laurie Chestnut?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. Next, we have solar and energy storage for City Hall, Justin Behrens.
Thank you. My memo can be seen on page 72 and 73 of the packet, followed by a proposal from Northwind. And we should have, do we have Greg on virtual, Aaron?
Yes, I am here. Can you hear me?
He is here, yeah. And do we have somebody else from Northwind on?
Mike is on virtual.
Mike's, Mike's virtual. And then we have Jordan, who is in the back of the room, also from Northwind as well. So this project has actually been in the works for a number of years, trying to put a solar panel project on the roof of right here, a City Hall and Library. Throughout the years, we've tried to run the numbers and nothing has really made, or stuck, to be honest with you, as far as a return on investment. Greg Gromen, our shared grant writer, was able to secure funding from Energy Innovation Grant last year in the, or very early this year, in an amount of $240,000, which pretty much made this project a possibility. So with that, we started working on putting together an RFP, because the sunset date of that program is the end of this calendar year. And so we put out a request for proposals. Last budget cycle, we budgeted for this project just about $68,500. So with that, proposal was advertised in January and we received one back, which was Northwind Solar out of Amherst. And basically what this project will do, and you can see additional information later on in the, in the packet, it does put solar panels on the roof, which will produce energy and help offset our energy bills here at City Hall. We are also putting with this project, three large batteries back in the electrical room near our servers. And with the way that the system's going to be configured, it's going to be a closed system. So we're not using the solar panels to sell back to the grid. We're using the solar panels to charge these batteries. And then at certain times of the day, the batteries will kick in. We will not rely on the grid and will offset our energy usage basically by using the stored power in the battery packs. Our rate is set up so during peak periods, we get charged a higher rate. So if it's, if we're using a lot, or if the grid is using a lot, those rates go up per kilowatt. So the, the system will be smart enough to identify that and can be programmed to help us maximize that benefit. So what, what we're going to be talking about here will be the panels plus the batteries. And I should note, the, the batteries will also support our servers, so the city servers. So every single city department comes off of our servers in the back and then also support Wapaka online customers. So if the power goes out, we can still have our servers plus online customers serviced for what we figure at least two, three days, depending on the charge. But again, these, these batteries with the programs have an awareness or they, they track the weather patterns. So if there's a potential for severe storms, they allow the, the charging to increase. Did have a little bit of snafu with the numbers and I had to submit a revised sheet and that was on your, your desk tonight. And Barb had mentioned that. The main reason for that is, well, with our, what we budgeted in these programs, the main two was the Focus on Energy program. So when we budgeted, we assumed, and you can see from the numbers, a rebate from Focus on Energy would be over 33,000. Actually, what we're now calculating would be more like just under 15,000. Also, when we did budget during the last budget cycle, the federal tax credits, we weren't aware of or they weren't available, and now they are. And what was shown in the packet, so page 72, the federal tax credits, how they were taken out of the entire project was misshown. That should be after all the other ones, after the other benefits of the Energy Efficiency Grant plus the Focus on Energy Grant. So from the handout, the bottom, which says updated numbers for discussion, that shows what the actual accurate project, project would end up being. So with the proposal request, like I mentioned, we only got one, which was from Northwind Solar. Their total project was $344,100. You take in the rebate from Focus, the grant funds from Energy Efficiency knocks off 240, and then the federal tax credits gives us a total project of just under 63,000, which falls within our budget, creates an ROI of under 10 years, which is favorable. The life cycle of these components of solar panels and these batteries, I believe they're listed to be 20 to 25 years. So we would expect benefit out of these things before their, end of their life. As part of the grant application for the Energy Efficiency that Greg got, we're going to be doing some education and I'm going to let Greg speak on that.
Yeah, thank you, Justin. Everybody able to hear me okay?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Yes, so we will be working closely with the library staff to conduct some educational programming on renewable energy and sort of environmental sustainability at large through their citizen science exhibit, which is expected to be available through, from June through August over this summer. Liz Kinnear will be orchestrating this exhibit. She has been in touch with somebody at Northwind Solar about using some of their educational curriculum to develop some sort of hands-on exhibits based on the materials that will be going into our solar project. And will be sort of, a neat component of the project will be that people will be able to sort of interact with the components that will actually be, being live on the, on the roof and in use. Not those specific ones, but you know, others that are available and not in use actively. So those will be available at the library exhibit room alongside some other elements like some units on prairie restoration and citizen science. So it'll be sort of a comprehensive environmental unit at the library over the course of the summer where renewable energy based on this project will really play a central role.
All right. So I think that pretty much caps it for us. Like I mentioned, we have two reps, one virtual, one here in person from Northwind, who's available for questions, comments. If there is none, obviously we're looking for an action to move forward with this project. This, the way I have it wording is to approve the project of $344,100, which we did not fund or budget for the full amount. We budgeted, like I said, 68,500. The bottom line, we believe, is 62,576. So if the council would like to change their wording to just give the max of that 62, we can work with that. Otherwise, I was hoping to do just the total project. And if we can, as we work through these grant programs, just assume that we're going to be within budget. So that's the way the wording's set up.
Chestnut. Any questions for Justin or the Northwind people? Scott?
So do we have these funds on hand or when will the final payment have to be, you know, some of these things are kind of bureaucratic and, and I'm guessing, do we have to pay upfront out of our reserves or how's that going to go?
Right. So the Energy Efficiency Grant funds are more or less on hand. The Focus on Energy is a rebate and the tax credits are a rebate. So yes, I mean, we're going to have to upfront and then re, I guess, give back to ourselves.
We'll replenish when we get it, okay.
Henry?
Tell me how the tax credits work. Does that go?
Does that go to the vendor?
Jordan, you want to?
Yeah, I can speak to that.
Yeah, awesome.
So as a part of the IRA legislation at the end of 2022, the administration made nonprofit, non-taxpaying entities eligible for what's really a direct payout from the federal government. So historically, that 30% was paid as a tax credit for, whether it's homes or businesses, tax-eligible, right? Through those years, governmental entities, hospitals, any other nonprofits didn't have a tax basis, so they couldn't take a tax credit. Through that legislation, now starting for 2023, that 30% is made effectively as a rebate from the federal government. So for lack of better words, it's based on the ITC, Investment Tax Credit Program, but it's actually a direct payout. So it'll be a direct payout from the government, there's going to be a form to file. Some of those details, as far as submission, are still being worked through over the next couple of months. But all told, it's effectively a rebate coming back from the federal government.
And then just kind of piggybacking onto Scott's question. Are you seeing any supply chain issues or anything like that, where completion could be delayed or anything? Because we've got to get this closed, right, by the end of the year?
Yep.
Yeah, it's a great question. Short answer is no. We have the modules inventoried already. The inverters, we're actually using two types of inverters, two models. Both of those are in track in terms of supply issues and delivery. If we'd be signing on for the project in the next couple of weeks, begin procuring equipment, we'd probably anticipate having that fully on hand within the month of May, maybe early June, and then beginning work sometime in May, early June, right about that same time. So at this point, no issues in terms of supply chain. We see issues with that on a larger scale. You see more utility scale, industrial scale solar going in, where they need megawatts worth of solar modules and large inverters and battery systems, where, you know, those might be twelve, eighteen months out. As far as systems this size, really no issue.
Did we put a new roof on this building?
Because I was going to ask.
Yes.
So that doesn't have to be done before? Because I thought, yeah, we did do that, okay. It was before.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Clarify. So the flat part, Henry, is complete. The peak, which is shingles, will be done this spring. We're trying to time that out to get done before these guys show up.
And after the online stuff gets off of there.
Dimitri.
What are the disposal costs after the life expectancy of the equipment?
It's hard to say at this point. There's a lot of discussion about recyclability of components over the last few years, and it's certainly something to address. There's many companies coming to the free market to address those issues. Namely, J.B. Strubele, one of the founding members of Tesla, has branched off since his days in Tesla, starting a company to address the recyclability of solar modules, battery equipment, so on and so forth. Being that the components and the equipment of a solar power system are estimated to generate and operate for twenty-five, thirty-plus years, it isn't necessarily an imminent concern. But at that point, we anticipate a lot of companies sort of doing that work for companies like us, where they'd be breaking down equipment, taking apart the usable and recyclable components of, whether it's PV modules or battery equipment, recycling them, putting them back into the supply chain, disposing them in a proper way. So a lot of those questions are really within the next five years, you're going to see a lot of movement in that industry and how those things will be addressed.
I understand that you can't provide exact numbers, because that's off in the future. I'm just wondering how that's going to affect our return on investment.
Well, you know, at this point, like I said, when we talk about systems generate energy for twenty-five, thirty-plus years, you know, again, it's not a concern probably with any of our careers here at the city. I've seen systems that have been installed in the eighties that still generate energy to this day. So hard to have a definitive answer as to what the options will be, you know, two and a half, three decades from now. But again, we're optimistic that there's going to be a number of options at that point to take advantage of.
Aaron.
I'm just going to really quickly comment on the return on investment. I think this is piggybacking off Dimitri a little bit. So I know you can see the numbers there in the new memo that was handed out. But I think one thing that's not reflected here is, as part of this project, to mention the Tesla power packs that are serving almost as like a generator. We've had it in our capital plan to purchase a generator for emergency operation purposes and things like that. They're loud, they're unsightly, they are $100,000. So if you look at it from that standpoint, we're getting that in addition to the solar project, which is, which helps that ROI number right away.
Callen.
What type of maintenance is required for this system and who performs that maintenance?
We talk with regards to solar power systems to be very low to no maintenance. Being that there's really few moving parts, that potential for things to break down is quite low. Solar module or solar array, again, are comprised of a static appliance, really. Again, there's no gears, there's no fans. It's rare to never that solar modules have any real issues. When we do, we see them early on, after installation, they're replaced quickly. Honestly, in my entire career, I believe I've seen two solar modules that were defective by way of the manufacturer. Again, you can identify them fairly quickly and get them replaced. Inverters, certainly, within twenty, twenty-five years may need replacement. At that point, you've recouped the investment and then some, whereas, you know, it's maybe worthwhile just to upgrade an inverter at eighteen, twenty, twenty-five years. Batteries, in terms of maintenance, again, not much to do to them. If we've done our job correctly, if the equipment performs as it's designed to, there's not a lot to pay attention to. What you will be able to do is watch the system's performance by way of a few monitoring platforms that we provide and set up and give access to, so that if there is an issue with the system, you can be quickly alerted to it. We're also able to monitor the system's remoldment. So again, if there are issues with it, we can identify that and then troubleshoot and technicians out expeditiously.
So to summarize, you're saying the ongoing maintenance costs for this are very little? And if there are any maintenance requirements, it's something that either you or our city staff can take care of?
Well, we're the first call, certainly. And depending on what that issue is, we can troubleshoot, diagnose, and if there's any additional service needed. Honestly, in the only terms of, in terms of regular maintenance, we recommend snow removal, if it can be done safely. If it can't be, those losses from the snow coverage are factored into our performance data as well. So past snow, again, nothing to actively do to the system. Monitoring aids in its performance. If there are issues with the system, again, we're your first call, facilitating and troubleshooting and service process from there.
As you're the only company that provided a quote, I assume you're the only people in the area that can service such a thing? And if you're out of business for whatever reason, then we're stuck with this device that we can't service? So my question is, how likely are you guys to remain in business for the length of this investment, this twenty-five years?
Very likely. We've been around since 2007. We were one of the really first solar companies that were a full-service turnkey provider in the state of Wisconsin. We're very strategic and measured with our growth. We've seen other companies come in and out of the business over the years, in great part because you see a technology like solar, and a lot of people want to become a part of it and take advantage of it. And those types of companies see their way out the door as quickly as they came through it. So with that, we pay very attention, pay very close attention to what we're doing and how we're doing it. The biggest reason I can say we're going to be around for a long time is because we invest highly in our employees, in our company. We're worker-owned cooperative. And so, being that we're a small company with about thirty employees, just about half of us are member owners of the company. So we're incentivized to do well by our clients, just a little more than the next company down the street. So again, we do everything in our power to be in business. We're in a tech, we're in an industry that's very much in a growth phase. You don't have to go far online to know that the solar industry is growing. It's one of the biggest industries nationwide in terms of job growth and has been for about the last decade. So all signs point very favorably to a positive outlook in terms of our business and what we're doing and how we're doing it. The best we can offer is our full efforts and attention to the system.
Okay, thank you. Dave, did you have a question?
My question, I guess, directed to Justin, or general comment. In your summary, Justin, you said you were asking, looking for a motion, one of two ways, the $62,000 version, or something, which you said would assume we would be under budget. I don't like that word, "assume," so how can we be more sure?
Okay. That was, that's because the overall proposal that Northwind submitted was the $344,000. And obviously, we are going to apply for this Focus on Energy rebate. We can't, we can't, or we can apply for it now, we can't receive it until the project's done. The same thing with the federal tax credits that Jordan had mentioned. So that was, maybe it was a poor choice of words. However, I just wanted to make you at least aware that there may be a little wiggle in there. Depending on how the rate is set up and what we report, what, how it is inspected, you know, those numbers could be adjusted slightly. Not to the tune of something that would be out of budget, or say $10,000 or more, but, you know, maybe a few hundred dollars here or there is what I would expect.
You mentioned you had $68,000 budget.
Yes, our budget was $68,500. So.
You're real confident we'd stay under that.
Yes, for sure.
So the motion could be a not to exceed that amount.
Right.
Eric.
This might be a small thing, but I'm just looking at the list of things on here, and I'm looking at number seven, it's talking about insurance. It says, "You are responsible for carrying fire, tornado, and any other necessary insurance on the equipment once delivered to the site." So I guess, do we have any idea what that extra insurance is going to cost us? Or what other insurance, does any other necessary insurance? Do we have any idea what that means?
Well, the short answer is no. We would have to reach out to our insurance company and get a quote, I guess, for that. Assuming that, you know, our facility is hundreds of thousands of dollars and we're insured for well over that for other infrastructure, that really the rate, I'm assuming, would not be affected much.
In our experience, both presidentially and commercially, insurance increases were more relevant years ago, when carriers were still sort of getting used to solar being out there and what to do with it and how to insure it, what is the value of this? Those days, when we'd encounter somebody needing to increase their coverage, usually led to about a 2% annual increase. Honestly, I haven't heard of a client over the past few years that have had to do anything to their coverage amounts because they've had enough, a large enough policy to cover the asset already. Certainly, it's something that you folks would have to look into on your side of things. But again, it's not common where somebody has to raise coverages for the installation of a solar power system these days.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we're covering our bases. Thank you.
Paul.
I have a question and then a comment. For the federal tax credit, did we include the cost of the portion of the roof that we have to do below where the panels are going to be in that? Because the cost of the roof, the replacement of the roof underneath the solar panels is eligible for the federal portion of the grant, the tax credit.
No, the roof was already on scheduled for replacement.
But it hasn't been yet. Is that what you're saying?
Half of it has been. The flat part has been, the peaked part is.
And where are the panels going?
All over.
Okay, so the portion of the roof that's being replaced underneath the solar panels would be eligible for the portion of that federal grant?
Well then.
We're not installing the system until the roof's replaced, that part of the system.
I understand that, but I'm just asking, because that's not something that's not necessarily always done. But in my research on this, it indicated that we can, the cost of the roof, where the solar, the new roof underneath where the solar panels are being put, I understand not all of it is, but some of it is, can be included in that federal tax credit of approximately 30%, is it?
Right. And that's a different contract, different borrow, or different budget, excuse me. And if that's true, we will have those invoices and we can submit those as well.
My next comment is that I looked at, and I'm going to be putting a solar panel system on my roof probably in the spring. And I contacted companies in Amherst. And I found them to be overpriced from what my research actually indicated. So I found a national solar, very reputable national solar farm that I'm going to be contracting with, that is, was approximately 65% of the cost of the quotes that I got from the companies in Amherst. I wanted to put that out, because certainly the council can vote to approve this tonight. Or it can, we can look at maybe getting one more quote. And I would even forward the name of the company and my research to Aaron to look into and see if perhaps we can get this done at a lesser amount than what we're looking at with Northwind Solar. So that's, so that's what I found in my, in my research. And this company, it's a national company, they do business in Wisconsin and all fifty states. And they are very reputable. So, and they were looking at doing my system, which is between a four and five kilowatt system, for about 30% less than the quotes I received from companies in Amherst, which is where I went to first. So just throwing that out there for discussion.
I think Paul's making a good point. I think the challenges are, one, we're a public entity, we put a bid packet out. So it's going to add time. I don't know that we have the luxury of doing a full rebidding, because at our purchasing policy, we're going to have to do a closed bid. Secondly, I don't know the technical differences between commercial solar and residential. That could be, play a role. But probably most importantly, we're getting two-thirds of the cost paid by these funds, Energy Efficiency Funds. And we don't want to lose those, because we won't do the project if we lose that money.
And eighty percent paid, actually.
And so I think you raise, you know, it's always that way in the public billion asset atmosphere, because you never know, right, when you just get one quote? But I could say, and not dissing on the company, if you've got somebody right in our back door that you can maybe have to follow up with versus someone that's based somewhere else, working all over the country. So I think that's some value. Now, is it meaning it's worth 30% more? But that's a big leap from what you're saying to this proposal. So I think you raise, you know, a concern. I don't know that we have the luxury of delaying much longer. You heard that it's going to take three months to get the equipment. So we're pushing up.
If I can just jump in there and add something to. One of the aspects that's unique with the federal grant money that's coming into this project is that there are some fairly complicated provisions that are attached to that that may raise the cost of the project. Those include Buy American provisions and Davis Bacon prevailing Wage Act provisions. Those provisions may, for one, deter companies that are not used to navigating federal provisions from bidding for a project, and may also secondarily raise the cost of implementing the project, because it changes the nature and complexity of the project.
Hey, can I chime in here just for a second? Paul, this is Mayor Smith. I, you know, we went through, we went through a bidding process, although we only had one bidder, we did go through a bidding process, and this is what we have. If we're happy with what they, the quality that they can give us, we have a motion, I think. Do we have a motion in a second on the floor? I can't remember, not yet?
Not yet, no.
Okay. But, I mean, I would echo what Henry has also said, that it's probably a little late. These, this company that Paul is. Uh, these, this company that, uh, Paul is talking about had every opportunity to also put in a bid and chose not to or didn't know about it, but that's not anything that we could do about in this situation either. So, I guess I, I would recommend that we proceed and make sure that we don't lose out in, on any of these monies.
Anybody else calling?
I noticed there's warranties on your work and the solar cells, but I didn't see anything related to the battery. Is there a warranty on the battery as well?
Yeah, there is. Uh, Tesla provides a ten-year warranty or ten thousand cycles per battery. Now, um, Tesla talks in terms of their batteries lasting twenty-plus years and they warranty it for ten years, so being that we've been installing them about five and a half years, it's hard to say definitively as to what sort of life you're seeing out of batteries. Uh, so I talk in terms of batteries lasting somewhere around fifteen years, give or take, depending on their usage. Um, is that helpful?
Mm-hmm.
And, and if I could just echo, um, a little bit to the, to the thoughts on, on out-of-state companies installing solar versus a local company. An investment in Northwind is investment in our, in our own local communities. Um, one of the first systems I installed when I used to be in the field installing systems, uh, were the ground monitor arrays over at Wapaka High School. I remember installing them in the middle of winter, uh, when the snow and sleet was coming in sideways and, uh, I was out there with three or four other people and, and it was important that we were out there doing it because we wanted to do well and get the project done. Uh, we wanted to exemplify our work and workmanship, uh, and get the system powered up, and it's been, it's been working, uh, flawlessly for, for ten-plus years. Um, in addition to that, we have, we've installed systems for one of the top real estate agents, uh, in, in, in the area. Uh, we've installed, uh, systems for, for doctors, um, dozens of residential systems throughout the area. Uh, we have a number of employees, uh, that live in Wapaka that work for, uh, or, excuse me, live in Wapaka and work for Northwind. Um, so, you know, being that we're in Amherst, we're a few miles down the street, uh, we're in this with Wapaka, we're with this, with the city. I come to the library regularly with my family, have, have for many years. Um, so you know a company's going to be around, um, to do the job well, uh, to put our full , forth heart and effort into the system because we want this system to be a hallmark of some of our work and to work well for the city of Wapaka. You can, you can go, go about many things in life and try to find the lowest cost, but one thing I always tell my clients is that solar isn't one thing to nickel and dime yourself on. You don't want the lowest bidder because you know what, you're, the, the workmanship's going to show. You want a company that's done this for a long time, is investment in local community, and that's what you get with Northwind Solar.
All right. Are we ready, ready to make a motion?
We'll make a motion, we'll accept the proposal as, uh, amended, I guess, uh, by Justin, uh, for the Northwind installation of solar on City Hall with the city's commitment being, uh, not to exceed more than sixty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars is, which is what we budgeted in the five-year CIP for it.
Second?
Second. Third, fourth?
Okay, motion by Velikar, second by who?
We said it simultaneously.
Dmitri, oh, second by Martin. That we approve the, um, contract with Northwind Solar of Amherst, um, for three hundred and forty-four thousand, one hundred dollars and the city's portion to not exceed sixty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. Any further discussion? Barb, would you take a roll call phone?
Colin Dextrow?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Henry Velikar?
Aye.
Scott Burchatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dmitri Martin?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Nine ayes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have license, license report number sixteen thirteen, operators, operators licenses, these are bartenders' licenses. We don't have any issues, I don't think, with any of them. Need a motion, second?
Some of.
Second by Chestnut, second by Peterson, that we approve license report number sixteen thirteen. Alton's favorite, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, motion carries. Do we have new issues or project discussion, communications and the recommend, recommendations of the mayor? Mayor Smith, you have the floor.
Thanks, Paul. Uh, I really don't have much tonight, I just, uh, I know Aaron has already talked about it, but, uh, expect a little longer meeting, uh, at our first meeting in March, uh, just because we're going to have the closed session, committee of the whole closed session meeting afterwards. Uh, Aaron might wish that it's a little shorter, but, uh, well, just kidding. Uh, but otherwise, uh, I think that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. And I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Hagan?
Second.
Second by Martin, to we, that we adjourn until our next regular council meeting on Tuesday, March seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, subject to call. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, motion carries, we're adjourned at six thirty-six, or seven thirty-six, seven thirty-six. Thank you all.